Two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. The Board of Education has been in closed session since six o'clock for the five items listed on the agenda. We have six board members present. Chris Kozinski is unable to make it either remotely or in person. We are meeting in person with the Cabinet. In accordance with Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, the Board President and the Superintendent have determined that in-person attendance by the public at the meeting is not practical, prudent, or feasible due to COVID-19 considerations, including great difficulty in maintaining appropriate social distancing in the meeting room and thereby spaces given the number of persons who are likely to attend and seek to engage in public participation. Public viewing and participation by electronic means is available by clicking on the video button on the Board Doc's agenda. Board members are physically present at the meeting, and this time we have no one attending virtually in accordance with Board Policy 220. So with that, we will begin the meeting by standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comments. For up to an hour, submissions received before seven o'clock on the day of the meeting will be read aloud or summarized after stating the name of the author. Comments received before seven o'clock, which are not read aloud or summarized, and those received after seven o'clock will be reviewed by board members. All submissions received will be made available publicly on the district's website, and there was a link available on the agenda on Board Docs for comments to be submitted electronically. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Troutman to please read the submissions.
First comment. Stand by one second, sorry. First person, Katie Marsicko. Hello, I realized that despite so many of us checking in, chuckling at the anonymous comment on 8/11 that heralded a silent majority, we realistically all might have been in a big, quiet club together if some of us didn't always have such exciting reasons to ask questions, of course. My husband and I were among two of several people who submitted comment prior to the 8/11 meeting. While it wasn't read, we had hoped it would at least be posted, as the Board suggested unread comments would be. But as of 8/22, we only see posted comments from 8/6, which went up on 8/7. Will all comments from 8/25 be posted if not read? Can the Board share their process for deciding which comments are read? Are anonymous comments acceptable? I only might ask because Board policy requests that people sign in, and this very form seemingly leaves spaces for one's name. Multiple other districts do not allow anonymous comments, but I concede we are not afraid to be unique here. I hope this gets shared, but in case it doesn't, it has already made the rounds and fueled a few meaningful discussions independent of this boardroom. Next comment. Catherine Wagner. My name is Catherine Wagner, and I have two children in the District 205 school system. I want to first start off. Sorry. Just not formatting well. Off this letter with a thank you. Thank you for being so passionate about our children and the education they receive in Elmhurst. I watched the entire school board meeting two weeks ago and was moved by the commitment you all demonstrated. I have a request that I would implore the Board to fulfill: retake the District 205 Going Back to School Parent Poll. Throughout the previous school board meeting, I consistently heard the June poll results quoted as 85% of the parents want their children back to in-person learning. I strongly feel that this is an inaccurate representation of what parents actually want now, and I'm gravely concerned that the school board is making decisions for the school year based on the poll results. When I responded to the poll in June, I chose in-person learning for the following reasons. One, I didn't know what the fall would look like, and I naively hoped everything would go back to, quote, "normal." Two, I wanted the flexibility to change my mind to remote if I felt the conditions were unsafe. I can't tell you the number of parents I have spoken to who voted the same way I did for the very same reasons. They all agree that the 85% figure is not correct, and if given another chance to take the poll, they would vote differently. If the school board truly wants to know what parents are wanting right now, and I know you do, they should immediately send out another poll that simply asks the following: Given the current status of the coronavirus in DuPage County and not being locked into your decision, which schooling option would you prefer? Remote, hybrid, in-person, all day? So I ask you again, will the school board resend a parent poll? This is necessary in order to accurately create the learning environment that represents what the majority of parents in District 205 would like. Thank you for your service to our children and for considering my request. Next comment. Amy Lambrecht. We are aware of several teachers taking FMLA time off due to COVID at the start of school. Do these teachers have the ability to come back into their pre-FMLA role? Do these teachers also have the ability to return for two weeks then take more FMLA time off? What is being done to ensure that a consistent teacher is provided to teach our children during this time? Next comment. Kristin Owen. I'm confident that you have received many queries in regards to the all-day kindergarten tuition payments during our current extenuating circumstances. I have a child in all-day kindergarten at Jackson, and I have not heard any resolution besides moving our children from all-day kindergarten to the half-day program or enrolling them from the district, both of which are not adequate options for many. Obviously, if/when our children, our kindergarten children, begin to go into the classroom for a proper, full day of in-person instruction, we would be happy to pay. But until then, it is unfair and unreasonable to ask for full tuition payment. It goes without saying, but a five-hour remote day does not equate to a full seven-hour day of in-person instruction. At this young age, we require to be home with our students, guiding and assisting when necessary. In our personal situation, we signed up our son for full day in hopes that I could return to the workforce after a few years hiatus caring for my children. Like many, this plan has been uprooted. We struggle with day one of remote instruction for our kindergartner, but he is a resilient and happy boy. Please note, this is no way a reflection of the excellent job our son's teacher, Mrs. Sarbosa, has been doing trying to keep 25- to 6-year-olds engaged, excited, and interested remotely for five hours. We are requesting that you strongly consider waiving the all-day kindergarten tuition until we can get a full day of in-person learning instruction for our precious kindergarten students. This is a completely fair and reasonable request. As an aside, we would also hope that you would consider more creative ways in which to get these younger students of the districts together safely with their teachers. I understand that some schools, including ours, may have tents and hula hoops for sitting at an adequate social distance purchased. Why is it not possible to have these all-day kindergarten students meet in outdoor classrooms adequately spaced out while the weather is decent? Has the district considered having parents volunteers onsite to assist teachers with logistics, i.e., with ensuring kids are distanced, mask help, et cetera? Many thanks for your time, consideration, and anticipated response. Next comment. Gail Rano. Climate science has identified that buildings play a major impact in causing climate change. The USGBC and American Institute of Architects have asked their members, including White, to discuss the strong influence with their clients, sharing the facts that buildings generate 40% of the CO2 that enters the atmosphere to cause climate change. We hope White has engaged you in these conversations. Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition has shared the analysis done by the New Building Institute and USGBC documenting that zero-net energy schools can be built at a comparable cost to current construction, a range of 0% to 7% increase, with many such as Discovery Elementary, referenced in several comments to the Board coming in at 0% increase. Recent school board discussions concerning the viability of building a ZNE school have revolved around the sub-financial impact identified by Wright to be a $2 million increase. ECCC suggests two sources of funds at: A) the Illinois Clean Energy Foundation, and B) funding from state solar grants such as FEGJA. At the August 11th Board meeting, the administrations shared feedback from White relating to their work on projects pursuing the ICEF grants. White stated they are currently working with two organizations: Stevenson High School and a recreation facility to earn their full grant funds from ICEF. The advent of COVID-19 has placed these projects on hold as each building must operate for a year and demonstrate zero-net energy usage. There was also reference to Sunset Ridge and their challenges. But as they did not apply for the grant, perhaps, we should see how other schools such as Stevenson address them. What can ICEF tell us about successful projects? The ICEF website identifies eight organizations which have participated in the program, along with the grant sizes received: 261,000 to 2 million. The New Building Institute website lists at least 100 sites, buildings of various types, including schools, that have been ZNE-certified or in the certification process. The process to apply for an ICEF grant for the summer cycle has closed, but they are still looking for projects. The proposal process is set up to identify school districts that want more than the money. They want to be role models for other Illinois schools by demonstrating how ZNE is achievable. To learn more, visit their website. The funding guidelines for this grant are eligible applicants may apply for up to $2 million or 80% of the incremental cost to achieve net zero energy. Grants are paid as follows: Up to 30% of total grant amount once construction has started, up to 30% once the building is occupied and building performance monitoring has started, and up to 40% after certification, and 12 consecutive months of site net zero energy performance. Schools play a key role in educating individuals to enter society prepared to handle challenges such as climate change by learning through real-life examples. Think how this project can be incorporated into STEM education throughout the district with more than half of District 205 schools having informal environmental groups. This is how our family became sustainable advocates 20 years ago. These types of projects foster community unity by showing you how working together no challenge is too tough. Why give this project any consideration now? Because District 205 education stresses our students be future-ready. We look forward to meeting with you to discuss this project. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is approval of board meeting minutes. Item A: Approval of Board Meeting Minutes for July 8th, 2020, July 14th, 2020, August 6th, 2020, and August 11th, 2020. Does anyone have any changes to those? Okay. Then they stand, those minutes stand as presented. Item B: Approval of Closed Session Minutes: June 10th, 2020, June 16th, 2020, July 8th, 2020, August 6th, 2020, August 11th, 2020. Those minutes stand as presented. Okay. All right. Next item is Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Does any board member have an item they would like to pull? Okay. Then you may call the vote, Jenna. Oh, sorry. Jeez, lot of practice. All right, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, Items A through G. Oops. Item A through, yeah, G.
I second.
Just slightly. Yeah.
I'm going to make that motion and read each item. So I move that the Board of Education approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, Items A through G. A: Personnel Report. B: Financial Reports. C: District Management Group Annual Membership. D: Declaring Surplus Technology Equipment. E: Professional Development, CORWIN. The Distance Learning Playbook. F: Learning Resource, Freckle, ELA. G: Hawthorne PTA Reallocation.
I'll second.
Jenna, you can now call the vote.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hassler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Next item, Superintendent's Agenda Action Items. Item A: Operational Plan, 2020 to 2023.
We presented this in July. This is the first business meeting since the July presentation, so we are asking you now to vote to ratify the plan. It is something that provides direction for us to consider our professional learning support for our learning priorities, which this year are formulated into three 100-day plans that we will have three basically each semester to provide focus for our work, and it also helps provide direction for our resource allocation decisions that we make and bring to the Board.
Okay, so could I have a motion first, and then any questions or discussion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the District Operational Plan for 2020 through 2023.
I second.
Okay. Questions or comments? Karen?
It was fascinating to reread this plan again after the last board meeting and understanding what we're doing to get, what we did to get the year started and what has been in place for the last two days. I didn't think that some of these items, like if you look at the PLCs and the instructional coaches and the technology and just getting all the organization kind of understanding and consistently utilizing at its highest level the technology integration, I found it quite fascinating, all the things that have been in place this quickly, to actually address and implement the operational plan. And I thought that that was really important for us to highlight. I know that you all, you know, were expecting to have some time to do those things, but it actually is probably the best thing, you know, that we can do is to really have everyone focused around these areas. And so I'm looking forward to just hearing updates. It's truly not just a plan that's going to be on the shelf because we're all living and breathing it each day. And I thought that that was an important perspective to bring and articulate around the operational plan, that it's just not something that we're doing just to do as organizations, you know, can. But as you, Dr. Moya, had indicated when you first talked about it, and the last time you spoke about it in July, is that it's your working and living document for the organization to understand how everyone plays a role and what role they have to play and how it really is impacting our children's education. So, thank you.
Thanks, here. Jim?
I have a couple of questions. After, also after seeing this school year start, in the, in the plan, you have a start, under Thrive 205, you have a plan to start school later in the next academic year, not this academic year. But I was thinking, you know, while we're in remote, or my question is, even if we go to a hybrid schedule, particularly at York, wouldn't this be a great time to trial a later start? All you have to do is take that hour and a half that teachers are available in the afternoon and move it to the morning.
Well, if you're, if you're talking about assuming that we're in a hybrid model or an in-person model at some point this year, are you, are you talking about our current condition of planning to go back? When we do go back to going back to a five-hour day? Or are you talking about if we were back in a traditional schedule?
No, no. Within, within our current five-hour day plan, you know, we have the five-hour day from seven, roughly 7:30 to 1:00, and then teachers are available roughly from 1:00 to 3:00 for consultation, you know, one-on-one time with students. I'm just asking. It dawned on me, you know, while I was reading this and then also now that I've had one day of experience with the schedule at York as a parent, that, you know, is there something that would stop us from, from moving that, that? And I'm sure we have a more technical name for it, but I'm calling it Teacher Consultation Time from 1:00 to 3:00. Move that up front, start the school day later, and have our five consecutive hours?
And do that just at the high school?
Yeah.
The only thing that I can think of, you know, not having given this a lot of forethought, I mean, it's something that we can, can think about a little bit. But the initial scheduling thing is built so that when we have to switch from a remote to a hybrid to an in-person or, or, you know, back flexibly one direction or the other, that the A students and the B students, whether they're in remote or not in remote, that their schedule stays relatively similar. And, and, and part of that may have to do with family planning for daycare, but also just simply for the continuity of the instruction. So without, and, and I don't know if other people who've been working more intimately with the high school would like to add to that at all. Certainly, you could feel free, Scott or Kevin. But without giving it a lot of thought, I would have to think through if there are potential ramifications because what I think about is not maybe as much of what it is right now, but what, what impact it would have when we get back to trying to transport kids and coordinate the bus schedules and keep the family schedules where the kids are rotating back and forth between the different instructional modes as seamless as possible. That, that's where I think there could potentially be some.
And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot looking for any answer right now, but it just dawned on me that this would be a great time to kind of trial that, that later start because it seems easy just to shift that two hours in the afternoon to become the first two hours of the morning. And when you're not transporting kids, and then give you some time to think through the logistical factors of transporting kids, et cetera.
Yeah, we could, we could take a look at that. I mean, it certainly, I can, I can, I can see the logic behind it. I just would have to think through the extent to which the details, you know, if there are things that we would have to think through in order to make that happen. And then, you know, what does the effect have if we have to bounce back and forth on short notice between, you know, different people's schedules and things like that? But we can, we can certainly take a look at it.
Okay. Yeah, I greatly appreciate that. It just seems like a perfect opportunity to take advantage, you know, or let's put it this way, make the best of a bad situation. And my other question is, the KPIs that are in here, by voting yes on this thing, are we locked? I know we're going to have a meeting later this fall to talk about KPIs. Are we locking ourselves into the KPIs that are in this plan? Or are they subject to change once we have our meeting this fall?
Well, I think that they would be subject to change once we have our meeting this fall, but I don't know that we could change them for this academic year. I think it would be something that when we update the plan and bring it back to the Board and extend it for another year and then have the plan 2021 to 2024, that plan could reflect the new KPIs. I think it would be difficult to find a way to change that systematically somehow mid-year.
Okay. All right, that answers my question.
Anybody else? I know we talked quite a bit about this in July, so. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, thank you. All right, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Hassler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. All right, next item, under Superintendent's Agenda Action Items, is the Director of Instructional Technology position.
So when we initially talked about staffing for the upcoming, or for this academic school year and went through the personnel process back in the spring, we were putting together a multi-year administrative reorganization proposal that included this position beginning this school year. And we took that out of the budget due to the imminent financial concerns that, that we expected to be on the horizon over the course of the next couple of years. But we currently believe that it is going to be very difficult for us to continue to serve our students and our employees without this position. We're, we're short on tech, tech staff. As I put in the board packet, we haven't added any, anything to the tech department in 12 years. At the same time, we've grown over 1,000 students, more than 1,000 students. We've gone one-to-one at every grade level. We've got two major construction projects. The technology does not only affect the students when we talk about one-to-one. We now have a lot more technology in the classrooms, a lot more technology in terms of teacher devices and more complex technology to support some of our STEM programs and other types of programs that rely on technology as the technology evolves. And so, and of course, the remote start to the school year is certainly something that I would say doesn't, is not what brought this to our attention, but certainly has accentuated the fact that this is, this is an area that we think needs attention. Also, technology has been involved in a lot more community outreach activities that involve distributing technology, repairing technology, making sure people have access to technology. And it's complicated, the ordering, the long-term planning, the replacement cycles, all of these things. Obviously, we're all in unforeseen circumstances, but technology is bearing a lot of the brunt of, of these things. And by adding this position in this manner to tech, what we believe we would accomplish is we would have a point person with ownership for the areas most directly related to the classroom, which is the professional learning, the media specialist, the tech assistants, providing a cohesive professional learning plan for our coaches and making sure that we serve the people in the buildings. But, but the flip side of that is that it will allow RJ to repurpose his time to make sure that the other things that we need to support the technology, like the Power School, like the various different connectivity issues that we've experienced this week, which the Zoom outage, just as a point of reference, was international. So that was, had nothing to do with any kind of local issue. And the periodic intermittent internet disruptions have been, have had nothing to do with our bandwidth. We've increased that by five times since last spring. You voted to increase the bandwidth. Nothing to do with our servers. It has to do with our provider. And at Cabinet this morning, RJ indicated that the best information he had was that they expect to have that problem addressed by 5:00 tomorrow afternoon, if all goes according to plan on their end. So I thought I would reference that. But we would then allow RJ to be able to repurpose his time. And this would be something that would then be, though it would be a director position, an instructional position, it would have the effect of improving our overall tech operations. So that is the rationale behind the recommendation. And our hope is that you will agree to authorize this tonight.
Okay, thanks. Could I have a motion and then you can ask questions?
Make a motion. I move that the Board approve the position of Director of Instructional Technology at minimum salary-based, minimum starting base salary of $120,919.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Karen?
I like the plan where you have this person working with RJ and Scott. I mean, everyone, but, you know, the point being is is to bring in the instructional coaches. It's in the classroom. It's helping really deploy or integrate technology, you know, into education. But, you know, RJ has that background and I know they're working together. I like the fact that it's part of the tech team because I know that the tech team would love to see that. And so what we're looking at is more, I'm going to call it, how do we organically do this? How does the integration of technology actually be part of our whole process of how we educate from the directors in the curriculum? You know, making sure that every time that they're deploying something in curriculum, that it has the technology component, that they're working with this person, you know, tech team, RJ, Scott. And so it's just part of the way that we are then deploying it. It's not, this, this technology thing is an offshoot of how we look at deploying something in education. And so then everybody's figuring out individually, each, you know, teacher, let's say, how do we do this? But we're trying to look at it more, I call it organically, making it be part of our process. And I think that we're taking a step toward that. And I think it's, it's a good thing. I think it's a great thing to have the instructional coaches, to have yet another person as their go-to to really, you know, help them with the issues that that are not necessarily unified yet because this is, you know, this is what happens when you're, when you're in this stage of deploying technology. So I like the the approach that we're taking from those aspects because then it truly is about how do we equip our education in the right way? And it's part of the process.
Thanks. Somebody else? Margaret?
Yeah, so there's a question. And Dave, I think when you started off, you were talking about the number of of technology staff and that it had, it had not increased for a number of years. And while I support this Director of Instructional Technology, I'm wondering, have you had the opportunity to look like, look at what could be added to the actual technical, those people who are actually supporting the technology? This is more of an administrative position. I'm wondering, have you had the opportunity to look at enhancing that support, that support group, that tech support group?
So when we put the initial proposal together, RJ was brought in to consult with Dave Smith and Scott and and have those conversations. I will let him speak to that. Everything is, has been so, such a Wild, Wild West kind of situation that they would probably right now say we need like 12 more people. But realistically, I don't know if you feel you've had a chance to evaluate that appropriately, but I know you were involved in some of the initial study.
Well, Dr. Harrell, I appreciate you asking the question because we have had a chance to kind of dive a little bit deeper into it. And this position is actually one of the needs that really kind of came to the top from that. Looking at the the needs from a school level, it really goes into the to the classroom, to the teachers, what do they actually need in their rooms to support the kids? And when we got down into that, to that level, we realized that, you know, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job with with everything that they can. But how do we support their needs at the different levels that they are? Some teachers feel very comfortable with technology in the classroom. When it came to Zoom, just this month, this last Monday, people were running and then we had some people that were a little bit hesitant. And we needed to kind of bring them along and show them the benefits and 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 all the wonderful things that come from, from using it the right way. So from kind of looking and seeing what we've seen so far, seeing the opportunities that we've seen across all of our schools, this position really, you know, Scott and I and Nikki and I and just the cabinet as a whole talked about it. It really seemed that this could be the, the grease to to really speed up our our wheels when it comes to instructional technology.
So thank you. So does that mean that the, that this position, that your assessment is that at this point in time, there is no need for additional tech staff?
No, please, I didn't, yeah. Well, when it comes to the the tech staff, in my mind, what I'm looking at is our technology support team. And from that, you know, speaking to what Dr. Moyer had mentioned a little bit earlier about the needs, even just this last year, we ordered, you know, additional number of iPads to to fill out our one-to-one for kindergarten. We also expanded and went to EC. And when when we look at those, those needs, we're talking about devices, but also professional development for teachers, for for instruction. So our technology support staff, they've been working, you know, 26 hours a day, trying to maintain and kind of keep things going, making sure kids have devices, making sure chargers are out, iPads are out, making sure those kind of nuts and bolts pieces are out there. But when it comes to to looking at the the use of the technology, when it comes to kind of maximizing and emphasizing the technology in the best way possible, that's where our technicians, their focus is not there. You know, our technicians are focusing on devices, making sure accounts are created, making sure teachers have what they need. But how do we really, you know, celebrate the technology learning that's going on? This is where we, we, we really started looking at this, this role. So to answer your question, if if I think that we're going to be okay when it comes to technology support services, the dust is still kind of up in the air on that one. Things are still kind of settling a little bit. We are being creative in terms of how we're leveraging our our personnel and how we're using them. But yes, as more technology continues to come, whether it's interactive flat panels in the classrooms or whether it's other devices that come in, I'm still really looking at the, the technicians, the people that we have on on site to make sure that we're, we're using everybody to their fullest potential. But when there's not any holes or anything that's, that's kind of opening up.
So then, and I, and I know this is like, I kind of, we, I kind of diverged from the initial point here that we're trying to recommend that. But could I ask that somehow, sometime you come back and after you had time to assess and maybe things have, I don't think they're ever going to slow down again, but can you assess what the needs are and present that to the board sometime soon?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Karen?
I have a follow-up to that, a great question, Margaret. Yes, it's a tangent, right? But I know that with the teachers in the classroom, and we said the IFPs and that whole technology, right, is, would be really great to have. We did approve to move in that direction. I don't remember the timeframe and I don't know the delays, if there's delays, because a lot of manufacturers are are having delays in shipments because of COVID across the world. So I don't know the impact to that project. But we did approve the project with one caveat, which is that your staff would be doing the implementation. So that's what I'm thinking would, you know, is, can they do, can they support the remote learning? Can they support all that, you know, we're putting on the plate as well as making sure that project goes off? Because we think that that's crucial to the educational experience, especially given the circumstances we're in. It would be a richer environment for education. Just a thought, board.
And and also to kind of piggyback on what Margaret had talked about as the tangent. I know it's only day two, but are, but are you seeing requests or a, a pattern of requests coming in from our teachers or schools of things they need? Like, I know they were there last week, but now we're day two in there. Is there things that are very obvious that they really need help with? Like, I've heard from teachers, like, the tech support's been great, but I need blah, blah, blah. Is that, have you seen that yet?
Yes, we are, we are starting to see some of that in, as our teachers go into this new year and as, you know, as you mentioned, it's day two. But as they're starting to kind of see in as, last week, as they were doing their professional development and just exploring with a new tool like Zoom, there are some, some ideas that are coming out of that. There are some suggestions, some recommendations from them that if I just had this, it would be great. If I could just do this, it could be great. So starting to kind of take stock of their feedback and and figure out ways that we can support them in that.
We're going to keep you posted on that because as we get closer to bringing students back into school and as teachers are starting to learn what that means for how they have to plan for their instruction, they, they, we, we had a cabinet discussion this morning and there are a lot of creative ideas that people are generating. And what we're trying to do is sift through and try to come up with a, a very thoughtful rationale for what it is we actually need in the various different areas, various different grade levels that will accomplish this, not accomplish, but help support them in this environment that is something that, you know, they've, they've really never done before and is going to be, at times, almost teaching in two different ways to two different groups of kids at the same time. So we're, we're listening. We had some of our leaders in this area, in the teacher ranks, provide some, some ideas, bring some ideas forward for us. So I think that there'll be some more of that coming.
Yeah, and I, I think it's not until they actually get into the classroom and actually have to teach the students that they go, oh, you know what I really need is this. So I'm really very excited to hear that this is a conversation that's going on. And you've heard us over and over again, mostly because Karen beats us over the head about the tech committee, but other than that, this board is very supportive of giving our teachers everything they need, especially in this time, to teach our students, whether it's remote or hybrid or back in the classroom. So I personally am looking forward to hearing what those creative and great ideas are because I know, I feel confident that we would be supportive of making that happen for them.
Can I ask a question? I don't know if it's for RJ or Scott or Dave, so I'll just throw it out. Do you see this position as really having a lot of, or playing a role? You know, the thing about tech is you, you get a little professional development, then you need to use it and then you need more, or you want more professional development to see what else it can do or help you. So do you see this role as, you know, really doing that for teachers, helping them, you know, constantly with the professional development? But then also, you know, it's mentioned in the rationale about the community? Because I feel like since I was struggling with Zoom this morning and it was not going very well, I probably need a Zoom. Like, do you see this role also helping, you know, parents, especially seeing as this is likely going on for a while, where we'll be in and out of remote hybrid? So can you speak to that?
I can, I can answer that. I, I think this role will, this person will wear a cape. I think they will, they will honestly, they will, they will have superhero status. We, we designed the job description to be broken down into two components. One is integration and the other is support. And we, we've seen that more now, the need for it. But this stems back to 2018 with the Mobile Learning Initiative. And that, that only wrapped up two years ago. And even, even this year, we went one-to-one with the EC and the kindergarten. And we, we need supports in all those grades. And I think the staff really, really will benefit from it. And I think the parents will too. Even the recent Remote Learning Resources website is great, but we, we had to go and do a really creative format to build that out and had to lean on some of our staff members' creativity and willingness to build it that aren't really designed for that. They did a great job, but, you know, it's, it's, it needs to be more comprehensive than that. And I think we can do it really well with this, this job. I, I think this job is the how to do a lot of that work.
Awesome, thanks. Because, I mean, I don't, you know, we're not going to go backwards. We're going to just keep moving forward with the technology, so. But the professional development is obviously a part of that.
I'm sorry, Kara, I thought you were done. I, I think when it comes to the, to the tech piece, that the, the part two piece that Margaret was talking about, RJ, you know, can continue to take a look at that. But when it comes to the instructional support piece, one of the advantages we think that's going to come out of this position is also organizing the untapped potential that exists systematically in, in the, the positions that we already have, like, that I referenced in the proposal, like the media specialists, like the tech assistants, to, to be able to, to completely, you know, truly leverage what we already have is something that I, I don't know that we're maxing out. So, I mean, everybody's working hard, but in order to truly have a cohesive, coordinated approach and, and, and putting people in positions where they can maximize their talent, I think that this position will help us better be able to build on the strengths that we, that we already have and, and the investments that we've already made too.
Anybody else? Okay, you can call the vote then.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio? Oh, sorry, Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. All right, next up is superintendent's communication, the gold circle of quality for the early childhood program.
Yeah, so thank you. So this is really just a good news item that I wanted to share. And that is that our ECC Early Childhood Center, I don't know if I should, I don't know if I can see better with or without my glasses with this mask on here, so I'm going to take my shot. The, they have standards and they, and they call it the Excel rate, but it's essentially sort of a quality control type of mechanism that the state has in place for the early childhood programs. They have their standards, they have their indicators, they do site visits, they have criteria that they look at. And in this case, there are 15 different standards. And our Early Childhood Center met or exceeded the quality benchmarks in each of those areas and was thus awarded the Gold Circle of Quality. And I've been in that building. I'm proud of the work that they do there. I wanted to recognize it. If you recall, a couple of years ago, they also received an award of excellence in linguistically and culturally appropriate practice. So they've been doing some good work over there. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize that. The...
Anything on that?
Okay.
All right, okay.
Anybody? Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, all right.
Yeah. So start of school update. I know usually do a comprehensive recap of the start of school in September, but because this is a little unique, I thought an update would be good. And just to that, all of you sitting here, I know it was a heavy lift and the teachers and the support staff and the custodians. And so just thank you. Just thank you. I know it's been a lot. So I'll turn it over to you to kind of recap.
Well, no problem, Kara. We had quite a, quite a run. I don't even know what to say. I don't even know what to say. But yes, we do kind of try to give you a little bit of a comprehensive look at, at how, you know, how we plan for the start of the school year in September. But we've kind of been talking about the start of the school year at every board meeting. And so we probably won't do that in September because that's all we talk about. But I will give you a couple of highlights, some specific information. You know, recognizing that yesterday was the actual first day of school and that some of the other information was covered in some of the previous presentations and different things that we've been doing. But all of our teachers did reach out to their students on Friday. At least I know that's true in the elementary level. I, I believe that our upper grade level teachers did as well. And yesterday, our ECC people handed out their supplies. They are, I, I don't know, RJ, the extent to which you were able to rectify some of the tech needs there, but we had, the shipment of iPads is delayed. We've had a couple of supply chain issues, not a ton, but we've had a couple and that was one of them. So they were scrambling to try to get them some backup machines and things like that until the new machines come in. So I stopped at that building on Monday. I also stopped at York on Monday because that was their freshman orientation. I wanted to make sure I visited over there. And they had kids all over the building, did a nice job of making it exciting. I thought that they did a good job also starting to get the system down for how to manage the actual physical space that they have with the number of kids that are using it at different times. are using it at different times. So, that's some of the planning that went into that probably will pay some dividends down the road as we keep doing this. We, I explained a little bit about the Zoom and the Internet earlier. And obviously, we know that the Zoom outage on August 24th of 2020 was probably the worst day for that to happen in Elmhurst. But I think that most of the people, what I was proud of the teachers, I was in one of the buildings and the assistant principals, and everybody was running around trying to figure out how to support the people. We had one person, because of the Eisenhower mess, that couldn't get in. So, we said, "Well, you just turn around and go home because you'll get there faster," you know. So, everybody was just doing the best that they could. And different people were finding different workarounds and making adjustments on the fly. And I just, you know, I was proud of our people. That was the last thing anybody needed, you know. So, we did have some construction projects that we're pushing right up to the first day of school, which happens when you have construction. So, you might want to get used to that. There were a couple of supply chain issues there. We got some tile for some of the office floors. We're coming in a little bit late. I will say that the offices look great, particularly Fisher. It's night and day. I'm thinking about talking to Todd after things settle down and seeing if we can do some building tours for board members so that you can see what some of these new spaces look like. I think you'll like them a lot. Yeah, yeah, we'll do something. So, I think that that will be, you know, we need some positives and some good news, and we have some, so we should celebrate it. But it did frustrate a couple of people that were getting in the buildings last week. You know, they hadn't been through it before and they were kind of wondering like, you know, "How am I going to teach on Monday?" And "How are we ever going to get kids in here?" But everything is in pretty good shape right now and will definitely be ready for sure by the time all the kids are back. I did, I think, at one point earlier mention, no, I did not, not at this meeting, but I have been planning for this, for this week's communication. Parents should get this week some updated communication that will get them a little bit more definitive answers on when kids are going to be able to start coming back to the buildings and how we are making some of those decisions based on guidance from the Health Department. And what does that mean for our specific situation, which can be a little bit different depending on your grade level or the configuration of your district. And you'll understand that a little bit better when I have a chance to actually explain all the metrics and show you the chart and that kind of stuff. But we're, we're a lot better shape. I wish we had had that information a week or two ago, like we had expected it. It would have made it a lot easier in the planning process, but, but we're at least getting closer with that. We also plan to build on the remote learning work that we did, that that wasn't a one-time thing. That's why in your package you see, and Scott talked about this last month when he talked about the remote learning plan for the year, but you saw some of the distance learning playbook. We're plugging into that and we're using that organization for ongoing support throughout the year. And we also do have two actual remote professional learning days. And we've developed a plan and are in the process of identifying additional time for our key people to get their heads wrapped around exactly how we are going to coach and lead this and what we think are going to be the most important things that we think we need to see teachers be utilizing in the classroom. So, that work will continue and be an emphasis as we move forward. There was another note here that I wanted to address related to the D-205 Parent Learning Resources and the Virtual Backpack homepage that I cannot address. There were some specific questions that came to me that are not part of the general update that I provided here that I'm not as able to answer as some of my other cabinet members are. So, I'm going to let them address those two items. Do you want to go first, Bev?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Very gallant of you. Thank you. Virtual Backpack, it is a resource that we do offer for the entire community. We have many events that will happen on the D-205 side of things throughout the year, but Virtual Backpack is our way to showcase the various events and activities that are happening that are kid-friendly, kid-related in a not-for-profit manner that are happening outside the community. Many times, we do get requests from various organizations to use our resources. So, this is one way that we can post their flyers, post information, and send it out to the community in a one-shot type of deal. And we typically send it out when we do Talk 205, which will be restarting very soon. And we have it listed on our website under the resources section of our website. So, if you're ever on the homepage and you scroll over to resources, Virtual Backpack is there. And it is free, available. And they certainly can email our office and we will be glad to add, any community member, not-for-profit can certainly put their flyer there. And we will make sure that it is showcased for the public.
Other item, other question that I can field?
Thanks, Dave and Bev for highlighting that. I know that I shared with Kara, just, even though I don't have kids in the district this year, I want to know what's going on, right? I get a lot of questions lately. And so, in preparing for this meeting and preparing for, what was it, last week? We had, yeah, last Monday, with the teachers coming into the buildings, we were assigned school liaison, so I went to my schools. And I really wanted to understand what the experience is for staff and for our parents. And this is a very unique year. So, I have been on our website more than usual. And I thought it was really important for us to highlight. There were three key areas of our website that I thought was really important and helpful for our parents, because education is familiar to us and it's not in this environment to our parents. And so, there's three places that I thought were important. One was the Parent Learning Resources. And I thought, if we could kind of do a tutorial, people, you know, I know that we have a lot of parents that are watching our board meetings lately. But I think the Parent Learning Resources is on our homepage. But that helped me understand the expectations or the familiarity if I were a new parent, because I have a lot of kindergarten parents and they're the oldest kids in my neighborhood, because it's transitioning. And so, that was a really helpful District 205 source to help them understand and, you know, what they can expect, okay? Or what they, because they want to provide the educate, you know, the partnership with us for their new students. And this is their first experience. The second one was the Virtual Backpack, but I thought the Glenbard Parent Series, Bev, you and your staff, I wanted to highlight because I haven't looked at it recently. But the GPS or the, if you scroll down, the Glenbard Parent Series Take Fives, I thought a lot of, a lot of the links that you're providing, so it's ease of use for people to just go on our website and get some of these resources from other districts that we partner with, to understand in this, in this remote or more isolated environment, we are not going to these big events, but we, as a district, are pushing it out or providing it to our parents and our students even, to pull it. And so, those are really important. I mean, the Ken Ginsberg, I've seen him with our, our partner, Hinsdale Foundation. And he's, you know, he's coming back, but he's doing it virtually. And, you know, you provided that link. So, there's several of those that are pertinent, I think, especially for our parents and our middle schoolers and our high schoolers, to have these resources that there are people, we have resources to help them navigate. And so, that kind of gets me into the wellness, right? So, it gets the last, the last one was the Thrive D-205. And what you have there on the link is, and it links to Julie Lithcott-Hames, who we had here, I think it was last year?
Last year this time.
Last year this time. So, it's a familiar voice to us. And she provides, you know, helping with just relationships in this COVID-19. It's different, you know, we're all together a lot more often. And how do you navigate those things? So, I just want, I just think it's, it's so important for us to communicate and to show people directly what is there and how to get to it for ease of use, because people are overwhelmed. I mean, we're adding a lot to them. And so, I'm hoping to say you're not, we're not just throwing you in sink or swim, but here are some key resources that'll help you understand in these three big areas that we hear are a struggle for our community. So, thank you for adding it.
Not a problem.
Okay. Yeah, Courtney?
To that point, what made me remember, could I make a request that I got multiple emails from different schools providing links, like they were great, hyper links for the COVID handbooks for each school? And can we get those on the website under that parent handbook section so people can easily find those? Because I just double-checked, it's just from last year's handbook. And so, I think that would be helpful for families. I want to not only say thank you to all the amazing people in the room tonight that made yesterday and today and this year happen. I really want to, I want to thank the teachers that were there, because I heard great stories in the last two days of teachers just, you know, really being creative with the hand they were dealt with the Zoom outage. I mean, Zoom went out and it was, it wasn't out for that long. I mean, it wasn't like the sky was falling. But immediately, my kids were getting emails from multiple teachers saying, "Hey, if it's not up by now, you know, this is what we're going to do." Like, they just were resilient and adaptive. And, you know, just, even today, Lincoln's fire drill, they had a fire, not fire drill, a fire alarm. And the teachers, you know, teaching a class, and she literally said, "Okay, we have a fire alarm here. Hey, how about you guys all go practice what you would do if there was a fire in your house right now?" Right? It just made me realize, like, they're in it. And I was so just happy to hear all these really positive stories from these teachers. And you can see them teaching and they struggled. And that's what I would do. Like, I'd struggle, "How many emails have you all received to me?" I'm sure it's my fault, but, so, I just want to give a big shout out to them because they really are taking advantage and just pulling it from their gut and doing the best they can. And I think they're really rocking it. I know it's only day two, so, but I'm, I'm really proud of them. So, just a shout out there.
Anything else?
Is it possible for someone to clearly articulate this week's schedule at all the levels? Here's an example. So, York has a different schedule this week because freshmen were in-person. And then, if I understand it right, that they have a different schedule for Wednesday this week that would be different than previous or upcoming weeks. Is that the same thing for middle school and elementary school? Like, what?
No, that was, that was separate. That York communication went out to York's parents. The other grade levels had no changes to the original schedule that they, that they were sent. The York situation was due to their desire to hold their freshman orientation day on that first day. So, that was the only change in the original planned schedule for the week at any of the schools.
Okay. So, for elementary and middle school, their Wednesday, which is tomorrow, would be that day where some kids are getting intervention, some kids are getting acceleration?
When we're in remote learning, the acceleration and the interventions are built into the schedule at the elementary level. When we go to a hybrid model, is mine not working? When we go to a hybrid model and start bringing students back in, then the Wednesdays might look a little bit different. But right now, it's just a traditional day of remote learning like the other days of the week.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, next is COVID procedures with Dr. Rubenstein.
So, whether Kevin knew this was going to be part of his job description this year or not, it appears to have evolved into a major part of his job description, partially because Student Services has to do with all the health and the relationship with the nursing, the nurses. The head nurse, Jen Conwell, has done a lot of work. And so, Kevin has ended up being involved in a lot of the meat of the original planning committee that we had. But then also, now as we get into all of these, all of this changing guidance about how are we going to manage the buildings when we actually are able to bring students back, much less the issues we have with the adults and making sure that the self-certification process is up and running and that principal's what to know what to do if somebody says, "I think I'm having symptoms" and whatever. So, we have a communication going out this week that's going to include a video, that's going to talk a lot about all the health and safety things that we're doing, all the PPE measures that are in place, some of the things we're doing at the buildings, including some of the things that I alluded to about the most recent Health Department information. Kevin is going to present to you kind of the state of the union of what we know now. And it might be different by September 8th, most certainly will. But at the same time, I think that a lot of people are curious about what's actually going on, what are we actually doing, what are the procedures that are in place. So, Kevin will run through that with you now.
Yep. So, first off, I want to point out that the doctor before my name is not an MD, unfortunately. So, it's just an Ed D. And I have to point that out. My family points that out to me often as we are going through these COVID procedures and talking all through this. So, if we want to move to the next slide, as Dave was just pointing out to us, this is the best information as it stands, really, at this hour. I was actually, as I was preparing and getting ready for this, as we were meeting tonight, I noticed a new section on the Department of Public Health website about school metrics that they had just added within the last several hours. So, it really could change by the end of the presentation. And that has how, that's been how it is, that we plan, we plan, we plan, we think we have it, and then it changes. Or the guidance gets updated, we think we have something and then it changes there. So, we're receiving information. I think that I counted at one point from the Illinois State Board of Education, the Department of Public Health, the DuPage County Department of Public Health, the Centers for Disease Control, between ISBE and the Department of Public Health, at one point on a Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, I think we had received like 18 different guidance documents from them. So, they were sending them to us almost at a rate of like every four hours, basically. There was, there was a lot to keep, there has been a lot to keep up with. Sometimes they agree with each other. Sometimes they don't agree with each other. Sometimes the DuPage County Department of Public Health, and I'm not at all being critical of them, is a little bit more restrictive than the Illinois Department of Public Health. And sometimes Dr. Moyer has a little bit more insight into why that is and what the DuPage County superintendents have been talking about that might lead to that. It just really has varied from time to time. And so, we are really working as hard as we can to get all that information out to our various different stakeholders there. But it's been a lot. So there is actually a testing problem, not only in Illinois, but across our country. That testing problem that you've heard about on TV is actually a really real thing. So the two people in our close circle that we know of that have been, that have had positive COVID diagnosis, it took them, one person got their test diagnosis back in 11 days, another person, it took 14 days. In that interim time, they were both given a clinical diagnosis of COVID where a doctor said to them, you've likely got COVID, we're going to treat you as a COVID person and you need to self-isolate and we're going to, you know, treat you as such. So that's something that is in some of the guidance there. The next bit of vocabulary here is close contact. And this is really critical for reopening our schools here because the definition of a close contact has changed pretty dramatically in the last week to week and a half here. And this is why you saw some of the schools in the area decide that they actually couldn't open to in-person instruction because of the fact that the definition of a close contact changed from six feet for 15 minutes at any one point during the day to six feet for 15 minutes throughout the course of the day. So that means that if I have a meeting with RJ three different times for five minutes and we're within six feet of each other, that's considered a close contact. Or if I'm a student at York High School and I'm following RJ in the hallway as a cohort often does, that could be considered a close contact because those are the sorts of things that are happening. It makes contact tracing really very, very important. And that definition of close contact was when several area high schools and several area school districts sort of said, we can't do this anymore. We can't open for in-person instruction. That definition of close contact makes it really, really difficult for us. And it goes to, we have to trace back to two days before the person tested positive for COVID. So it's not just today, it's the day before. So there's a lot of information that we would have to gather there really very quickly. It could also be a smaller distance if the person is actually symptomatic. So if you're coughing or sneezing or you have some of those other symptoms there. So that's close contact. Then we've got quarantine and people get these last two mixed up quite a bit. So quarantine is when a person has been exposed to, but does not actually have COVID. And so they are put into quarantine for a period of time. And so they're supposed to be monitoring for symptoms. And that's actually a longer period of time than the isolation or self-isolation, which is the last vocabulary term there, which is when a person has COVID-19 or has symptoms of COVID-19, they need to be isolated to stop the spread. So that's a little bit of the vocabulary there. This next slide here is just some of our proactive safety measures. So the district has provided the following to all of our classrooms across the district. So every classroom across the district has now hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipes, face coverings. So everybody has, we actually had some great business partners from across the country and in the area who donated. We got some donations from the State Board of Education for face coverings. We also brought, we also bought clear masks, those sorts of things in a limited supply. We have purchased the equivalent of Lysol spray for every classroom across the district, gloves, so for your hands, disinfectant spray bottles and paper towels for every single classroom across the district. In certain areas of the district, we're also providing additional PPE. So like in places where we are planning on bringing back our students with more significant disabilities who may have challenges with bodily fluids and those sorts of things, we would be required to keep additional stock of PPE, so full body PPE, those sorts of things. We're actually required to have that. Our nurses have to have, if you are in a room in certain places, have to have additional stock of N95 masks, those sorts of things. So we purchased that. Plexiglass shields, so for our school psychologists, our speech language pathologists, our English language learning specialists across the districts as they're assessing students and where they may need to take off their mask in order to individually assess the students so that the students can actually see the moving lips on their face or where the student may need to take off their mask so that they can be seen. We purchased Plexiglass shields there. And then face shields. So in certain situations where we have a small number of students who are coming to visit us at the district office or in their building and for some assessment, those sorts of things, where we have some additional face shields. We also have Chris and his team with Todd have worked on enhanced cleaning and disinfecting across the district. In some situations, we have enhanced the airflow where possible. So that's something that has shown, there's a little bit of research out there about the amount of time that COVID actually can live in the air. And we have a publicity campaign that is going on right now. It's one of the things that's recommended by CDC. So they have a poster, like several free posters about social distancing and those sorts of things. And then some additional like floor decals, those sorts of things that we're putting in the buildings. So if you want to move on to the next slide, this is the sort of nitty gritty of it. So the updated guidance from the Department of Public Health and the State Board of Education doesn't really discriminate between when a person actually has COVID and when we actually have a symptom of COVID. So when our teachers or in the future, if a student wakes up in the morning or if they come down with one of these symptoms during the day, any one of them, we are required to exclude them from school. So fever, headache, shortness of breath, cough, sore throat, vomiting, diarrhea, abdominal pain, congestion, nausea, muscle or body aches, fatigue. And then the other one is new loss of sense of taste or smell. So you can imagine that a person like me who has seasonal allergies is going to have difficulty self-certifying on a regular basis, right? So this, this is the complication of keeping students and staff in our buildings during COVID. You can imagine what's going to happen during cold and flu season. We are lucky, Dave and I were joking about it when I was at dinner the other day. One of the original symptoms that was on here is runny nose. So you can imagine what's going to happen during cold and flu season here. So and how difficult it is going to be to keep students and staff in our schools, right? So on a regular basis. Now, there is some information about that we are working on. So for instance, we may have a staff member who has a negative COVID diagnosis and their doctor has then said, and Kevin also has asthma, and this is just an ongoing symptom that he, that he already has there. In those situations, we're working with the team at Francic to sort of say, is that acceptable? And it may be acceptable, just depending on where the Department of Public Health lands on that to get those answers. Because the reality is, is that sometimes people get sick, sometimes that happens. But we are also in a situation where any one of these things could lead to lots of people getting sick in our schools and that is the last thing that we can have happening. So we're required to exclude anybody with any one of those symptoms. So on the next slide is that if a staff member's at home, then we tell them to not come in. We have them call their principal. The principal actually works their way up to Jen Conwell, our head nurse. That head nurse sort of does some information gathering and that sort of thing about where that person has been, if there was any close contacts, those sorts of things. And then she and I work together and I, I actually have a text chain going with Dr. Moyer and Bev and Luke right now. If a staff member's at school and experiencing one of those symptoms, then the principal or supervisor will make sure that the class or work assignment is covered for the remainder of the day, that we close the room in all areas the staff members worked in for the last 24 hours. That's one of the CDC guidance documents saying that you should be closing the room, air it out for at least 24 hours, then clean it and disinfect it. We work with the staff member, they may be feeling lightheaded, those sorts of things to make sure that they have appropriate transportation to get home and direct the staff member to isolate and seek testing. So then regardless of what, of whether the staff member's at home or at work, we get that area cleaned and disinfected, all areas where the staff members worked and visited. So we're talking about potentially offices and classrooms and those sorts of things. There's lots of places that that needs to happen. We work with the DuPage County Health Department to begin contact tracing. So I want to talk with you a little bit about what that looks like, not go too much into depth. The DuPage County Health Department really has been working hard to get that up and running and to make sure that that is really robust. We are in charge of making sure that we are working with our staff to help them to gather that information. So we, for instance, put out a sample form for them to say, like, here's something that you could use for yourself to make sure that you are sort of tracking yourself during the day. When we have students back in the buildings, we are going to have sign in and sign outs so that we know where students were during the day. Students are going to have assigned seats in their classrooms, those sorts of things so that we would be gathering seating charts if there was a case in the classroom of a student, those sorts of things. So we would be working on making sure that that happened. And then notifying other potentially impacted individuals so that others can begin to quarantine if necessary. So there's a lot that goes on in a really, really short time period. So then getting people back to work. So the Illinois Department of Public Health and the State Board of Ed require one of these things to be true if the person just has symptoms of COVID. So we either have to, they either wait it out for 10 days at home. So that's the first thing. And, and they have to have 24 hours pass since with no fever, diarrhea, vomiting, and symptoms have to have improved. Or they have to have a negative COVID test and fever-free and no diarrhea or vomiting. Or the last possibility is to go to their doctor, get a note from their physician with an alternative diagnosis. So, and what we are seeing a lot of happening right now is that when people try to go to their doctor, their doctor is saying to them, let's take a COVID test. So then the COVID test is still taking a little bit of time before they'll give them the alternate diagnosis. So doctors are becoming really familiar with people's symptoms. So even somebody like me who has allergies, my doctor would still say, it's still a good idea to get a COVID test. And so that's why it's really important that we just, everybody should be encouraging people, if they're not feeling well, they should be getting a COVID test. That's, that's a good idea to be doing. So that's just if you've got symptoms. To get back to work, if you've tested positive, this is on the next slide, if you've tested positive or you have a clinical diagnosis, you need to be out of work for 10 days, at home for 10 days since the symptoms first appeared and 24 hours with no fever and no diarrhea or vomiting and the COVID symptoms have to pass. It could be longer if you have some additional or ongoing exposure or if your symptoms are continuing. So we also have some staff members and students who their symptoms are not subsiding. So they have to be out of, they have to be away from us for longer periods of time. That's happening in lots of places and we have to understand that that's going on. And I'm telling you this because of the fact that when we talk about staffing our classrooms, this is, this is the reality of what we're dealing with in terms of getting the subs, trying to do it on a day-to-day basis. What does that really look like, those sorts of things? These are the realities of how all of us are trying to fit this puzzle piece into place. It's really, it's, it's a really sort of intricate dance. Then this last piece here is something that Scott and the rest of us were looking at, a news article right before this, that they've been having some problems in another school district, is quarantine. So if you, you want to go to the next slide. So if you've been exposed to COVID positive individuals, so you're required to stay home for at least 14 days from the date of your last exposure. If possible, stay away from others who are at higher risk for COVID and then monitor for symptoms. It could be longer that you're out if you have additional or ongoing exposure. So for instance, in our district, we have some students who also have parents who work in the district or vice versa. So that is a possibility. Or it could be longer if I am quarantined and then I test positive myself. So like I could, you know, be quarantined and on the 14th day then test positive or develop those symptoms and then be out for my period of time. So that's going to be a long time that I'm going to be out of, you know, the office for. So on this next page here, as we go through this, just a couple of examples. So this person had their last close contact, a person who was exposed with no additional exposure. So they had their last close contact on the first there on that Wednesday. And so that last day of quarantine is the 15th and they're, they would be able to return to work on the 16th. So they're going to, you know, be out of there. So one question that people often ask, and I know that this is going to come up in some of your questions, does this mean that they can't work remotely? It does not mean that they can't work remotely. They could work remotely if they are feeling well enough to do so. And then the guy sitting behind me gets to sort out the COVID leave, which is because certain, everybody gets a certain number of days of COVID leave, the FCR leave that are, you know, included in there. So for example, maybe I go out here and I, and I'm really sick. This is not a good example, this is just an exposure example. But maybe I go out here and I am actually isolated because I'm sick and I'm not really feeling, I'm feeling really well enough to do work on, you know, the second, third and fourth. And so I actually do that, but the seventh, eighth, ninth and 10th, I am just dragging. And so I cannot even log into my classes and my Zoom meetings and that sort of thing. And so we have to find a sub for that, right? So, and Luke's got to sort that out. But the 14th, I can log back in and the 13th, I can log back in. And so all of those wouldn't count as COVID leave days. And so nor would they count as sick days, those sorts of things. So we've got some nuances that we get to sort out in everybody's sick leave and all that other stuff that is brand new to everybody working. that is brand new to everybody working in a school district and across the country on this. So that's one example. Another example, a little bit longer. Person is sick and has COVID. This is like an example of maybe a parent who also has kids in their district. And so a person is sick and has COVID, and then they have some additional ongoing exposures to COVID. And so they actually have to be out of work for a longer period of time. I counted 19 workdays that they would actually have to be away from us. So 19 days out of actually being in the classroom. So there's a lot there for us to consider. And it changes. So, you know, in other places, people are looking at this all the time, and it is tough guidance to keep up with. It's really meaty. Chris and I were talking on the phone one day, and I said, oh, there's a new guidance document out. Said, what does it say? I said, Chris, I need to hang up with you to like actually read it, like to really digest this. It takes a while to really do this and to really sort this through for all of us and to really understand it all. So that's really sort of where we're at. The next couple of pieces here, this is like a total team sport. And so staff members are reporting it to us. Principals and supervisors are communicating it with their nurses and head nurses, custodians, director of facilities. They are following up with the staff members and working with potential close contacts. The head nurse, Jen Conwell, who's doing an outstanding job, is working with the DuPage County Health Department. The, she's communicating with the nurses and with me. I get to communicate with Dr. Moyer, with Luke, and with Bev. And then we're really trying to stay on top of all of the guidance here. On that next page there, Luke is really trying to administer with his team all of the FF-CRA leaves, coordinating with the principals and other staff members about staffing on a day-to-day basis and what this looks like so that every day at 7:30 or 8 o'clock or 8:15, that we make sure that every kid has a Zoom, somebody else on the end of that Zoom. And so far, it hasn't been an issue. But, you know, the time is coming, you know, where that could, that could be an issue. And Todd Schmidt and his team, director of facilities, coordinating with the building custodial teams to ensure health and safety protocols are followed. Bev is working on inquiries from the press if needed and handling public information. And Dr. Moyer, of course, is overseeing the process and communicating with all of you as the time comes. So there is, while Dave says, no problem, and we're making it hopefully look easy, there's a lot going on behind the scenes with, and this is just staff, with, you know, our 800 or 900 staff members right now in the buildings. So you can imagine what happens when we start to bring students in the building and what that looks like and how much more of a heated scenario that turns into on a regular basis. So I'd be happy to take questions for you.
Thanks. That's a lot of information. Thank you. Beth?
I have a few questions. Thank you for all that. It is a lot to sift through, and it's overwhelming. So thank you for sorting all of that out for us. So just a couple of things. When it states that if you're within six feet of someone for longer than 15 minutes, is that, if our students are six feet apart, then is that? Just could you explain what, within six feet? So if they're six feet apart, is it, are they good if they were together for longer than 15 minutes?
Yes, for the most part, unless they are experiencing symptoms. So if somebody is coughing or that sort of thing, they could be, that could be a shorter timeframe that we're talking about there.
Okay, so then could you talk a little bit about if somebody in the class does have symptoms, the teacher or a student, then would the entire class have to follow those same guidelines for exposure?
Yep. So what we are looking at right now is a situation where we would attempt to do some contact tracing as much as we possibly could. So that's why seating charts, keeping kids in close cohorts as much as possible during the day is going to become really, really imperative. So, you know, we're taking sort of a mental picture in our head right now of where everybody's sitting in the room. So if Jenna got sick, I would know that, you know, Jenna was in close contact with you because she is sitting next to you, that sort of thing, and that you would be considered a close contact and that sort of thing. So we're going to do the same thing with our seating charts in the classroom. So we would then send notification and let you know that, you know, a child in, your child's class has either developed symptoms of COVID or has a clinical diagnosis of, that sort of thing. And then for the rest of the people, we are going to let them know because what we don't want to have happen is a situation where there was somebody coughing in the classroom or that sort of thing, and their child goes home and they say, you know, Beth was coughing all day today. And then we get all of these phone calls about, how come you didn't notify us, that sort of thing. So those are the sorts of things that we are working on. But it, there's, and so we have that all written down. We are testing them with small groups of people right now.
Okay, and then one other thing, or a couple other things, actually. So for some people who suffer from a chronic issue like migraines or chronic digestive issues, things like that, it seems like they might never be in school. So is, are there provisions for those staff or students that have a note from a doctor that they have a certain condition or something that happens on a regular basis that would alleviate them from that?
Yep, that's, that is a really good question. We are working, so if you read the guidance from IDPH, the Illinois Department of Public Health, like to the letter, the answer would be no. We're working with the team from Franzic to get something in writing to sort of say, all right, so if you, if Kevin Rubenstein has seasonal allergies, and we know that, I'm going to go to my doctor at the beginning of September and have my doctor examine me and say, these are the symptoms of seasonal allergies that Kevin Rubenstein typically has. And that's going to make it good for the month of September, as an example. At the beginning of October, then Kevin Rubenstein needs to go back again to his doctor, get a new letter, that sort of thing. What that's going to ensure, and again, we're working with our attorneys on this, what that's going to ensure is that you are regularly checking in with your healthcare provider to make sure that the symptoms that Kevin Rubenstein currently has are really still the symptoms of allergies and not COVID and not something else. And maybe that doctor is going to say, let's do a COVID test. Let's do blah, 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 and check in about some other things. And it is also just making sure that our protocols are safe and, and secure, so.
Okay. Thank you. And then when kids are, or have to be at home quarantining, will it be easy for them to shift to a remote learning model? If they're able, if they're not sick and they're able to do that?
Should be very easy for them to shift to a remote model with the way that we have things set up right now and with what we are working on with our teachers to provide additional options for videos and those sorts of things. So that is something that has been really important to this team and to many of our teachers, is making sure that all of that is in place so that if I'm a student and I fall ill for any reason, that I can still participate in my classroom, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then just one more thing. I'm not sure, this is probably something that changes depending on regions and what's happening, but are there any guidelines for travel for our students and staff?
Yeah, so it's interesting that you asked that. So I wanted to go to Wisconsin over Labor Day weekend to, you know, there's like a nice little retreat place. Yeah, I totally can. So the Illinois Department of Public Health has a travel advisory map that they have put out there. There are currently no restrictions that DuPage County or the city of Elmhurst, or the village of Elmhurst has put on any of us. They have put a travel advisory map out there, the Illinois Department of Public Health. What that map is based on is the number of cases per 100,000. You're going to laugh at this because it is 15 per 100,000. Now, today, Illinois ticked over 15 per 100,000. So we are now actually considered a state that you're not supposed to travel to. So they update that, they're supposed to update that weekly. But like California, Alabama, Nevada, Florida, those were states that you were considered higher risk. And so if you were traveling to those states, you were supposed to take extra precautions about making sure that you wash your hands and wear a face mask and do all of those other sorts of things if you were there. There are currently no restrictions about making sure that you quarantine or anything along those lines when you come back from those places.
Thank you so much.
I have a follow-up question to Beth's travel advisory question. So who takes precedence? Today, the CDC came out and said these travel advisories and quarantining people because they've been to a different state, they recommend against. So, you know, if the, did you say it was the Illinois Board of Public Health that is issuing these travel advisories? Who takes precedence there?
So we are required to listen to the Illinois Department of Public Health. And they often work in conjunction with the DuPage County Department of Public Health. But the Illinois Department of Public Health is who we ultimately have to listen to.
Okay, so they trump the CDC and they trump the DuPage County Health Board?
I wouldn't say that they trump. They attempt to have their guidelines in, in alignment with each other. And what often happens is when the CDC issues guidance like that, then a couple of days later, the Illinois Department of Public Health will update their guidelines.
Does anybody have guidelines for the number of people that can track the disease in a building before you're supposed to close that building entirely?
So there are not, to my knowledge, guidelines about, about that specifically. What we have been seeing a lot of lately from the Illinois Department of Public Health and the State Board of Education is what's called this adaptive pause metric. And it's in your board packet this evening. So whereas in the spring, a lot of the guidance that was being put out from the Illinois Department of Public Health seemed to be really short-term. What we are getting a lot of right now from the Illinois Department of Public Health seems to be much more focused on the long term. So they are talking with us about if your cases are this in the county and the number of youth are this level and the number of tests are at this level, then you may be in a hybrid scenario. If it is at this level, then you should be fully remote. And give yourself a period of, you know, several days, several days to transition between those. And really getting specific about what that guidance looks like rather than it, rather than what it looked like in March when they said to all of us, shut down tomorrow, basically, and go remote. So it looks very different than it did in March, which is, we're pretty sure that this disease is out there, this virus is out there. It is probably going to hurt a lot of people. It seems to be much more precision-oriented right now. And the guidance is really focused on, how could this hurt school-aged children? What does it look like in your county? And what are the trends looking like all around you?
Jim, I'll be, I'll be providing some, some of that. That's part of this specific information that we'll be releasing after we, we get it, we think, on Friday. So some of that will make maybe a little bit more sense when you see it laid out.
All right, and my final question to whoever wants to answer is, so parents sign their kids up for in-person or remote at the end of July. For parents that change their mind, is that possible to, like, particularly parents that have changed their mind from the hybrid setting to a fully remote setting for their kids?
The parents, the parents can always go from in-person and/or hybrid, depending on what their grade level is, because we think that early childhood is going to be in-person. But whatever form of in-person they have, they can always make a choice to go to remote.
Okay, all right, good to know.
Is that it? Thanks. Anything else? Oh, Courtney?
So, thank you, because that was very helpful. And as Beth and everybody else has said, a lot of information to digest. And I think this was a clear way for the community to kind of understand what the protocols are going to be. So when you talk, and I'm just kind of looking at, I think, your first example, that person who's exposed with, with no additional exposures in that 14-day isolation window, not quarantine. I listened in the vocabulary section. What, and I'm talking specifically if it's a staff member. Would a test early with 48 hours into those exposure period cut down a negative test? Like if they take a test on the, you know, the third, Friday the third, and it does come back, not 11 or 14 days later, but 48 hours later, would that cut down on the window of them being, does that negate them having to be gone for 14 days?
It does not, unfortunately. So what, what the doctors, the actual doctors have learned about COVID is that you can develop symptoms anywhere from the second to the 14th day. And so, and you can test positive anywhere in that window. So unfortunately, you still have to quarantine for that entire time. So that's the guidance from the Illinois Department of Public Health and from the Illinois State Board of Education.
Okay, so that, so in contrast to somebody who has symptoms versus somebody exposed, right? Because somebody has symptoms, that's your number two box that says they can come back to work if they test negative, fever-free, 24, no diarrhea or vomiting.
Yep.
So that's somebody who has the symptoms. They can get back into the class, student or teacher, earlier than somebody who has just been exposed with no symptoms?
Correct, yep. So if I have symptoms, so let's say that I go home today with a cough. I have to go home, and what gets me back in is a negative COVID test. Or I can go to the, my doctor, my physician, and he says, Kevin always has asthma, and it gets worse in September. In August and September, it's like the worst season for him. And he writes it on a note, and he sends it to Dr. Moyer, because he's my supervisor. And we go forward from there, and that gets me back in.
But, you know, Nikki, who has no symptoms and just is in close contact with you or exposed to you, no test.
Well, a little bit different. I have not had a clinical diagnosis.
Right, well, say you were. So you say, you know, it's not asthma or your, your allergies, and you're positive. Nikki, who has no symptoms but just sat next to you during this meeting, now is out for 14 days.
Yep, so the thing that is going to get me back into work, if I have a clinical diagnosis or I have tested positive, is 10 days. I have to be out for 10 days at a minimum, then, so.
So you're going to be out less than Nikki.
Exactly, yep, yep.
That's my, yeah, I'm not, it's just, just understanding this will help our community understand why a teacher is going to be teaching, Nikki would be teaching remote. She feels fine, she's, you know, like, but it will help the community understand why certain things are happening at certain times. And I think that's really important for them to understand so they can be a little more patient.
So, and, and so it's a really fair point. Because we, you know, we've had a number of employees and students who have said, I've been exposed to COVID. And so then they've been exposed to COVID and so then they have to quarantine. And so they're doing that, but they feel well enough to work, so they're working remotely. And so we have to rely, you know, we are, that phrase that we've been relying on since March, that we're all in this together, really rings true here. Like we have to be honest with each other. We have to like really be about this community and making sure that we're taking care of each other and being honest and giving people full information and all of that other stuff, so yes.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, thanks.
One other thing, Kara, just to that point. I do think that it is good that we can have students switch to remote and staff switch to remote so that, you know, we do want people to be honest and we want to make sure that they don't feel like they're going to be missing out or something and that would maybe cause them to not share information. That was important for the safety of everyone else, so. You know, making those provisions so that we can provide those, you know, that help to students to keep them on track and to keep staff working, I think is really important.
As long as they're well enough to do so, yes, yep.
And it's, I think, remarkable, given what we just, you just presented and we just talked about, is how many people that we have in our buildings as of a week ago, yesterday, and then, you know, today, today and yesterday.
Yes.
Which is pretty close to full staff.
Pretty close to, pretty close to a fully staffed. And it changes by, I mean, while we've been sitting here, I've been getting text messages from our head nurse, you know, so like it changes. So that, it changes and things happen, so. And it's still August 25th and that will change once we hit, once we hit cold weather. And we're still a part of this, so.
But I like the fact that it's not theory, we're in practice.
It is exactly it.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, okay, thanks again. All right, next item is Tweet of the Week.
Yay! Tweet of the Week. RJ, I did send this to you late, so I don't know if you got it, but I'm going to talk a little bit and if we're able to get it up on the screen, great. If not, I also did forward it to each of you as board members. We're in the second day of school. Welcome back to the 2020-21 school year. It is totally unusual, but it is no less special for someone's child, for some of us. For someone, this is their first day, their first year going to school. For some, it could be their first day as a freshman or second day as a freshman. It could be someone who's preparing to go into their senior year. So the start of school is no less special just because we're going through this particular moment. As I began to think about it, I've been an administrator now. This is my 20th start to the school year, so each of you have a number. It means something to you, so I want to send congratulations and thanks to all of our teachers, thanks to all of our students and parents for rallying. This has been a monumental undertaking and we are here. So tonight's Tweet of the Week represents that a little bit, represents a little bit of the change that we're going through as well as some of the hope that we're enduring. And it goes to Katie Murphy. And you can find her on Twitter at KatieMurphy717. She is shouting out and saying, happy first day of school to the amazing, from the amazing Field staff. Their Twitter handle is @FieldD205. It is @ElmhurstD205 if you're ever following us on Twitter. And our hashtag that groups all of this stuff together is called #IgniteD205. If you look closely at their picture, you have an opportunity. There's something different, but there's still something quite the same. It is the full staff. They are socially distanced as much as they possibly can be. And all of them are wearing these wonderful things that we call face coverings. But they're still united, they're still out there, they're still doing it. So thank you to the Field staff, wishing us a great start to the year, wishing all of you a great start to the year. And we're going to keep going and we're going to keep doing our best.
Thank you, Bev. All right, next FOIA, Freedom of Information Act request.
All right, 11. I'm just going to leave it at that. Reopening of school communication to parents granted. Current district website links provided. All communication of superintendent and high school administrators denied. List of employees in retirement track granted. Results of spring 2020 staff survey denied. Employee retirement notice granted with redactions. Employee TRS information denied. Certified and administrator salary, job title, and school email address granted. Data for 85% school selection and many questions granted. Current district website links provided. Correspondence between ETC and district denied. Correspondence between athletic director, school officials, and IHSAA not in possession of records. Parent survey results granted. Current district website links provided. Custodial service bids not in possession of records. I just wanted to say one thing in closing here, and Kevin, nice job. He made a comment and I, I've said some things to this effect, similar in some of my communications, but everybody, you know, really wants the kids back in school. We want the kids back in school. But to the extent to which that is going to be realistically possible and sustainable is going to depend largely on decisions that people are making outside of school. And, you know, I ride around town like everybody else and I see what's going on and I just am encouraging people to be careful. We want you all back, you all want to be back. But as Kevin said, we're all in this together and we need everybody doing their part. So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have anything under Board Communications? All right, so we have three upcoming meetings. Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 is a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here at 7 o'clock. Wednesday, September 9th, 2020, Finance and Operations Committee meeting here at 5:30. And Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here at 7 o'clock. If there's nothing else, then I will call the meeting adjourned. Thanks, have a good night.